Franklin County, Boulder County, Commissioner Nair Sessions. Commissioner Jones with your leaders in prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We ask that you be with us in every decision we make. God, we believe you, Lord, for calmness today, God, and steadiness, Lord, that people should expect from their government officials, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
Good morning. I think we got a problem with the business of being missing phone.
Well, you know, the good old social media. So, Commissioner, there was something sent out yesterday that said that the county commission is considering closing restaurants today. It's not on the agenda, it's not anything, a subject we have discussed, you have a discuss with me, one-on-one discussions, so I think it's safe to say that that is not being considered today unless one of you commissions are going to tell me something different right now. Okay, so, no, so anyone that's here just to speak about restaurants, restaurant closures in the county, that is misinformation, fake news, whatever you want to call it, but that's not up for consideration today or discussion today, okay? So, we can just clear that business. And then Commissioner, if you would, I know you have the, next you have payment county bail, I'm sorry, your minutes and the payment county bills, and then I'll be right back up here again to talk about probably the highlight of the day.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
Same move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones, all the papers.
Aye.
All the polls, they pass unanimously. Next on the agenda, payment of the county bill.
Same move.
Aye.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by two, Commissioner Jones and me, all the papers.
Aye.
All the polls, they pass unanimously. Now, we got a recognition?
Yes, Commissioner. So, this week is Government Finance Professional Week. So, what I did, I asked all of your constitutional officers in the county to appear before the board this morning with their finance staff so we can basically recognize them. So, I would ask, before I read the resolution, that all the constitutional officers, along with their staff, please stand. Now, who might be running late is Heather and her staff, but we all know it's election day today, so it's not easy for them to get away. So, I'll be quick, if you guys stay standing, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association founded in 1937 and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges and universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas the FGFOA is dedicated to being your professional resource by providing opportunities throughout, through education, networking, leadership, and information. And whereas the inaugural Government Finance Professional Week, sponsored by FGFOA and all of its members, of its member governmental organization, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services they provide to our state and our community. And whereas during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now, therefore, the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims March 16th to the 20th, 2020, as Government Finance Professionals Week in the county of Franklin, and extend our appreciation to all government finance professionals throughout the state and here in the county of Franklin for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Adopted this in this open session, the 17th day of March, 2020, Commissioners, I need a motion, a second to adopt this resolution.
Same move.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Burton. Discussion, we're proud of y'all and y'all do good work and keep up the good work. Any more? All in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, they pass unanimously.
And if you would bear be a little bit longer, I would ask each constitutional officer to step up with their staff to the podium and give them a personal thanks of all their hard work.
Absolutely.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I'm here with Ginger, my exemplary finance staff. She does an awesome job in not only representing the sheriff's office, but representing the county and everything that we do. Again, thanks for doing this, Michael, this is really awesome that we recognize these folks and...
Ginger, have anything you want to say? You're doing all the hard work. Come on up here, we can get a photo.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate that.
Thank you. Yep.
Of course, I have the biggest staff, Commissioners, because of us doing your business with finance and budget, but we appreciate y'all recognizing the staff, and I couldn't say more about my staff and what all they do on a daily basis.
They're good.
Thank you, they are. They should get more recognition than they get.
Yeah.
I guess I'm taking pictures because I'm going to send it down south of, these pictures probably show up on some state website somewhere. For your heads up.
Thanks, Flagless Officers, glad to be here, we appreciate the recognition. I'd like you to recognize Stephanie Terrell, Shawna Martina, and Rainey Buzor, who keep the office running, and that's what we do, take money and send it to you all.
Love it.
We love you.
Bring it on.
Property Appraiser's Office, and this is my finance officer, Megan Dempsey-Shawver. She joined my team in 2015, and she and the rest of my group make us look good.
Keep up the good work.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, just as a Commissioner, just praise everybody that we just saw this morning. I call it peace of mind, and you really do help us facilitate our job. It's something that the public often doesn't see, but I've gotten a chance to go in behind the closed doors and work with you guys, and I can tell you the peace of mind that you have brought me, and I know that you bring all the Commissioners here in this dais, and we really do appreciate you guys, and thank you.
Anybody?
That's it? Thank you all once again very much for coming this morning, I know you got to get back to work, but thank you all for showing up. If the constitutional officers may stay a little bit longer, our next discussion you might be very interested in, but thank you staff, and thank you everybody, Commissioners, again, they do a great job. Okay, so, Commissioners, that was the highlight of the day. Everything else from here downhill. So, and I'm sorry to put it that way, but I've learned from the best, to be honest, though, you know. So, our next discussion here, Commissioners, we're going to get, we'll start off with Sarah from the Health Department, we're going to get an update on the coronavirus. My intentions of having this is first to get an update, and then for us to have open discussion here as to where we go forward as a county, together on the same page. I think you might see representatives from the city of Appalachia, and I'm hoping the city of Caravelle might have some staff member here. You also have, Mr. Solomon is here, also Commissioners, so that we can talk about how this is affecting tourism, how we're going to move forward, and the message we're going to send out there. There's some other key people that might want to speak, I've asked the constitutional officers to stay. So, again, what I'm looking here for is for, after we get an update, open discussion, and we all, as one community, move on on the same page with the same message. That's the intent here, let's hope that could be delivered, and I'll let Sarah take over.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Hines, again, I'm the administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Franklin and in Gulf, here to provide a quick update about what we know about coronavirus and what we're doing in our communities. Of course, I've got my staff back here who can introduce themselves, and we have David Walker here. So, the truth of the matter is that we are dealing with a new virus, and we've been trying to keep everyone in the loop on it. It has caused some panic in some areas, but, you know, hopefully, communities can stop running out of toilet paper. Luckily, Franklin and Gulf are staying calm and following the guidance from the Florida Department of Health and the CDC, and I think we're a little bit more seasoned in emergency situations, and we have that great partnership with each other, so we're trying to remain calm as we're watching like the news coverage of this, of the situation. And I think when people start seeing massive closures, they really start to worry about how bad the disease really is, but that strategy of those mass closures is really just to limit the spread of the disease, especially in really populated areas. And while we are still learning about the new virus, COVID-19, which is part of a family of coronaviruses, we are seeing that about 80% of the folks that get the virus will have mild or no symptoms, but what they can do is spread that virus to the other 20%, and that's what we're focused on, it's our at-risk population. So, that includes our older population, they define that as folks over 60, that doesn't seem very old, but people with compromised immune systems, people with underlying medical conditions like heart disease, diabetes, lung disease, those are the folks that we're trying to make sure have medical coverage when they need it. And if you have a mass surge of cases in your area, say, we thought in terms of just wanting to get the virus over with, right, that's really not necessary because it's going to cause lots of panic and unnecessary suffering in our communities. So, the folks that need the critical care the most, if we did a mass surge, might not be able to get it. So, what we're trying to do is keep our medical system of care manageable, as well as society still operating, we're trying to balance that, because I don't know about you, I'm not interested in living in any conditions that remind us of the early days of Hurricane Michael, so, all right, I hear that. So, societies are using a term known as flattening the curve. So, rather than seeing a spike of cases, we're trying to have a gradual tidal wave of cases over time. It's a longer process, but that gradual cases over time mindset actually saves lives and helps to keep our medical system of care at its capacity to handle Franklin County. Will we get cases? I get that asked us a lot, and it's possible, yes. We don't want to reassure you that we won't, but what we do know is that this is an evolving situation, and if we take the steps that we need to take, to implement mitigation strategies for our communities, we're setting ourselves in a much better position. So, there's a lot of guidance that we're pulling from the CDC. One of the best documents that I've come across is something that we sent out yesterday, and I'm just going to read the title of it on the CDC website, cdc.gov, it's called "The Implementation of Mitigation Strategies for Communities with Local COVID-19," that's the new coronavirus transmission. And I think this will hopefully provide a little bit of comfort in our county, as well as Gulf and the others, in alignment with the strategies that it sets in this, in this type of document. And so, it actually details certain activities, certain mitigation activities you can do when you have none to minimal cases, minimal to moderate or substantial, and it breaks it down by individuals and families, schools and daycares, assisted living facilities, nursing homes, workplaces, and community and faith-based organizations. And what you'll see in this, this guide is that we are doing the necessary activities in the none to minimal category, but also in the substantial category, because you're starting to see a lot of different closures happening around, right? And so, this is something that we're holding close to as we continue to get new guidance from the CDC. Again, with all of these tactics, we're just simply trying to slow down the number of cases that we get over time, avoiding that surge, and most important, keeping our at-risk populations safe. So, you know, we've talked about this at the last meeting, but just a reminder that COVID-19, it does spread just like the flu, it's a respiratory illness, it's a new virus of a family of coronaviruses, and we've been sharing the simple hygiene and respiratory care strategies since the beginning. I actually printed out some of those flyers today that I wanted to pass around to our audience, because I figured they could help to share that message. We are working, do you want to hand it out to Louis? Okay, we are working hand-in-hand with Pam at the EOC, she is, has always been a great partner for us, and we're working out some strategies. One of the best updates that we are providing right now is on the Franklin EOC Facebook page, but what we do daily now is take that update, that's pinned to the top, we make a copy of it, and we send it out to that, that distribution list, which includes so many of our partners, all of our stakeholders, businesses, churches, anybody who, who needs to be added to it, we try to keep them in the loop, and that's just something we're doing on a local level, because the more information that comes from us, I think the more prepared that we're going to be. So, it does talk a lot about the updates currently, just to, I probably should have said this from the beginning, there are no cases in Franklin County, I apologize if you're waiting in suspense, but it, like I said, we might get cases, right? Are we going to panic? No, we're not going to panic. What we'll do is what we do every day in public health, we'll start with contact tracing and try to limit that risk of exposure. You can call us, we are available to answer those questions that you might have. The phone number for the Franklin County Health Department is 850-653-2111. There's also a hotline available, if you go to floridahealth.gov, it's red at the very top, it's 866-779-6121, and you can also email covid-19@flhealth.gov. Call us if you can, first, we can try to answer the local questions, we like to talk to our residents. Follow the cdc.gov guidance, follow the floridahealth.gov for cases in the state of Florida and what state implemented efforts are happening. There's a lot of media coverage about this, so it is quite normal for people to worry about outbreaks in their areas, so just have those conversations. We can channel our concerns into actions, like I said. The tips on hand washing are still relevant, wash for 60, or sorry, wash for 20 seconds, sing the Happy Birthday song twice, avoid touching your face once those hands are clean, because dirty hands will spread germs, you touch your face 25 times an hour, try to not touch your face, avoid contact with people who are sick, if you're sick, please stay home, I would hope you would do that anytime you're sick, cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue and throw that in, and throw that tissue in the garbage, don't put it back in your pocket, and if you don't have a tissue, we tell the kids, sneeze like a vampire, where you sneeze into your elbow, not into your hand, because again, you're trying to keep your hands clean. So, there's a lot of updates on, on that, on that update that we provided on the EOC. Testing, we're getting a lot of questions about testing. The protocol right now is call your healthcare provider first, if you think you're symptomatic, to determine if there's an actual need for testing. If a person thinks they have COVID-19, they really should call their healthcare provider before going to their office, so that the provider can take precautions to prevent exposing other people. So, in some cases, they might meet you in the parking lot, and it's not, not something to be scary, it's just a precaution, because we've really got to, the at-risk population is, is one area, but we also really got to keep our healthcare workers safe, right? They need to be able to respond to the situation, as well as other patients, so review those signs, symptoms, and history of travel with your, with your physician, and then they're, what they're going to do is they'll evaluate you for all possible causes of respiratory illness first, and then also contact us to coordinate that testing. So, if you're hearing that we're in testing shortages, we're not, we're just trying to make sure that the people who need to be tested, you know, fall within that risk assessment that we've been using. Time, turnaround time, it's, it looks like state lab results are generally, generally available within 24 to 48 hours, and commercial labs, like LabCorp and Quest, can take up to three to four days. And the turnaround time can be affected by demand, so we're just trying to monitor that. There is recommendations on mass gatherings, this is, this is information that we're just simply following from the CDC. Right now, it, it does talk about canceling or postponing events that consist of 50 people or more. You did hear the President say maybe reduce that to 10, and I would suggest any, any community events where you have your at-risk population present, you probably do want to go down, but we are following that, in that, in that frame of guideline, guidance. And then, of course, I think they can talk about some TDC recommendations from our director. Do you guys have anything else to add?
Let me just add.
Sure, okay.
David Walker, CEO of the hospital, Georgie Weems Memorial Hospital, so this is a evolving situation we're in, and information changes daily, but Georgie Weems Memorial Hospital has been working hard to keep our patient staff, community health, healthy and safe. In response to the recent COVID-19, we have taken multiple measures and precautions to minimize the spread of this infection. We are following all recommendations from the Center for Disease Control, Department of Health, Florida Hospital Association. Weems is prepared for and capable of providing care for patients with, with an illness, including COVID-19. To prevent the spread of this virus, some of the specific temporary actions we have taken are restricting visitors in the hospital to one visitor per patient at a time. We also will be limiting visitors in the ER to only two, and the reason why we're doing that in the ER, because somebody may come in, they may be sick, but they may bring 10 people with them, and we're just trying to minimize that. Restricting visitors to only those over the age of 17, you know, trying to make sure that we don't have young people come into a death facility, you know, when people are ill. Requiring all persons, interviewing all visitors for signs and symptoms of infection or exposure to infected persons, requiring all visitors with fever or flu-like symptoms, cough, or shortness of breath, to wear a mask, following all posted precautions. All visitors, patients, and vendors will be screened through a questionnaire for visitation. Anyone who has foreign travel within the last 14 days, been in contact with someone who has travel, has upper respiratory symptoms, or fever greater than 105 degrees, will not be allowed to visit. So, what we're saying is that if you fall in that at-risk category, and you need to try to come visit somebody in our hospital, you know, you will not be able to visit, and we're just, we don't have any cases here, we're just trying to be preventive. One of the things we're seeing, you know, we have our elderly, older population in our hospital, and so we need to protect them, and we had, over the weekend, we had six people that was inpatient, now we have about five, and these people are, you know, older individuals, so we're trying to do everything we can to protect them. Also, we're definitely coordinating with Lloyd EMS, you know, to make sure they have all the information that they need, and working with Sarah. One of the things that people may wonder, you know, why is the Health Department taking the lead on this, because in ESF-8, in an emergency situation, the Health Department is the lead authority on coordinating medical services. Now, one thing that is not mentioned, if you're a person that may not have insurance and you need to be seen, need to be tested, you know, East Point Medical Center, that's our federally qualified health center, you know, they're charged with seeing these people and providing that test. There are some monies probably will come through the legislature, I'm thinking, and I'm sure federally qualified health centers, or through the federal government, will be identified for that money, and we as a county, I'm sure Sarah and her team will make sure that East Point Medical Center, you know, do their job to take care of the uninsured, you know, people that, you know, may need this particular test, but we're here working together, trying to keep the lines of communication open, but like I said before, things changing so rapidly. Also, the government issued an executive order about no visitation in nursing homes and skilled nursing facilities, and one of the things in that order, we just got confirmed last night, is about patients that may come back into the county for swing beds, that we probably will have to enforce that as well, that they cannot have visitations, so we're just getting clarity on that, but we'll, we'll look at that as well.
Okay, one other thing I was going to add, I completely forgot to mention what we just passed out, it's the flyer on social distancing and what that looks like, we've had a lot of questions about it. What's the other page? Okay. And it talks about, just keep, you know, let's start implementing social distancing a little more than we, when we have, and, you know, you're keeping your six feet apart from each other, other practices. Can I borrow this for a second? Oh, shopping during peak hours, I'm starting to see some stores, thank you, I'm starting to see some stores operate certain hours just for the elderly, and so those are just things that stores can possibly think about. Working with your employer, if you have, you know, you're trying to keep your workforce safe, so if they need to stay home when they're sick, obviously, let's do that, but there are also some telecommunications strategies that people can possibly implement. And, yeah, avoiding travel, especially to areas with outbreaks or community spread, so it's really, it's important to pay attention to what's going on, as well as, of course, the things that we already talked about, of protecting the basic hygiene practices and respiratory care. So, everybody here has a social distancing flyer, and you all have received this electronically.
The last thing I'd like to say, I see you looking at the clock, Mr. Mike.
Oh, no, 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 that's not what I'm looking at. Actually, I'll tell you both in a second what I'm looking at.
Well, so, Mr. Mike, just moments ago, we started out, he mentioned that he had heard this rumor, so I don't know how it got started, but somehow, it's been said that restaurants are going to be closing, and he clarified, that's not happening, definitely not right now, at least, there's no mention of that. I think we all at some point have heard our fair share of rumors going on, and that's something that tends to happen when we're in these times. But, I'm the Public Information Officer for the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County, my counterpart, Jessie Pippen, is back there, and she often supports us in Franklin, as well as a deputy PIO. Our job is to promote transparency and clarity. We don't want to have any citizen, visitor, resident, partner, business owner, stakeholder, whomever, in the dark. If they're in the dark, they can't prevent exposure. So, our job is to spread transparency and clarity, and mitigate and reduce misinformation, rumors of gossip as much as possible, because we know that informed people make better decisions, and it's very difficult to make a good proactive decision with misinformation, no matter how well-intended, misinformation is still misinformation, and it's not healthy. So, help us to help our community by spreading the correct, actual, factual information. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Sarah, for, you told me this Friday, but for the public's sake and for the public at large's sake, not just this morning, I want to ask you a question and get you to answer it.
Okay.
So, if we ever get a positive result in Franklin County or neighboring counties, you were telling me about it being a presumptive positive.
Thank you.
Please say something about that.
I forgot to mention that, thank you. Okay, so, here's how it works, so if we get a positive case in our county, it's because it was tested positive in one of our state labs or commercial labs in Florida, and it's known as a presumptive positive. That test gets sent to the CDC for confirmation, and then it's called a confirmed case, but we're not going to wait on a confirmed case, we're going to act on a presumptive positive, right? So, we, what we'll do is, we'll issue out a press release to make sure everybody is aware that, yes, we have a case, and we'll talk about the extent of the exposure, and then public health workers, obviously, will do what they do every day when we have any type of outbreak, we work on contact tracing, and so, everybody will be aware if we have a case. We keep hearing rumors that healthcare workers are hiding information on cases, and I'm, I'm trying to strengthen that one message, like DT just mentioned, that once we have a case, we will let everyone know, we're not trying to keep secrets here, we're trying to keep our community safe.
Thank you.
Do y'all have a testing kit in Franklin County?
We do, we have testing kits available at the Health Department, as well as with our healthcare partners, you know, it's, we've been working on this for quite some time now, and we've been trying to strategize different messages into community to remain the calm that we need for that slow wave, but we started with our healthcare partners, and we reach out to them very, very often to make sure that they have the capabilities that they, that they need, as well as the resources to be able to handle the situation as it is right now in our communities.
Well, I guess I can join the meeting, there's over 50 people in it.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to emphasize to the public, Sarah, what you have taught me about a week and a half ago when you briefed me on the early start of the, of the epidemic potential, just as you answered that question on presumptive positive, I think it's very important that the public know how important it is to focus on the continuity of care of information that is coming from the authoritative source here at the Health Department. These are old pros, and I remember Sarah telling me early one morning, about a week and a half ago, that we have been dealing with outbreaks before they ever became popular, and we know what we're doing. I just want to focus on the quality of the group that you just heard, and how important it is to be focused on that source of consistent authoritative information that you just heard.
Thanks, and I appreciate that, and if we can all do our part to protect our at-risk populations, I mean, we, we could certainly see a very slow gradual tidal wave, and that's, again, that's, that's what we're hoping to make sure, that we can avoid the surge, we can keep our healthcare at its capacity, and we can keep our at-risk populations safe. So, thank you.
Let me ask you, I'm asking, it might sound crazy.
There are no crazy questions.
But, what kind of time limit do you want? But, um, what kind of time limit do you, on a virus like this? How long do we usually hang around? I mean, three, six months, a year? I, I know you don't know, but can you guesstimate?
Well, the thing about this virus is, we don't want to just get it over with, right? Because if we have that surge, we're gonna be in a lot of panic and suffering. So there's really no known understanding of just how long this is gonna last. Once we get more information, we'll keep you in the loop on where we think we're situated, especially in the state of Florida.
So we dealing with a long term?
It could, it could take some time, but we'd rather have a gradual, I'm gonna keep saying it, gradual tidal wave of cases, rather than that surge.
Well, I can see it.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
This isn't like the chickenpox back in the day, where you wanted all the children to get it at one time.
Oh, right. Yeah, we're all getting exposed.
You know, my parents definitely intentionally exposed me to it, because they didn't have time to keep taking off of work. So, everybody get it at one time, and we get it over with. If that happens here, we are going to max out our healthcare capacity. And so what will happen is, people won't be receiving proper care and attention, and exposures will just go like wildfire. We want it to be manageable, because if it's manageable, we can control it. With the CDC, it stands for the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, we want to be able to control this. We don't want it to be steering our, where we go, we want to steer where it goes.
And just to echo what she's saying, is that, you know, really, when you get these cases, you know, almost like a speed bump in the road, you kind of like, you want one or two, instead of 20 and 50, what you're saying, kind of like in South Florida down there. And so you want to, want to do everything you can to minimize it, you know, so we can have local control of it here. And it may get to a time that we may have to look at our meetings, you know, and say, okay, we need to have meetings that only the essential personnel will come to, really, you know, to protect the public. Because really, just want to, you want to protect the people in our communities for this particular virus, and we just got to play our part in it, that's all. And I think we can be ahead of the curve. And the only thing with us, you know, of course, we have a lot of visitors coming in and out, we go, we go to Tallahassee a lot, we go to Bay County a lot, you know, watch those counties, really, because once it hit there, you know, a lot of us go there to shop, eat, work in that area. But we can do our part here locally, really, you know, to handle this, I believe, as long as it don't overwhelm us at one time. Thank you.
So, so Commissioners, with all that being said, I guess the next question would be, and I'll start off with, does any of the department heads, the county department, do any of you guys have questions? I know Whitney is out there, too, because some of the libraries are closing, not all, it's a few. So I guess we need to consider some sort of message that we tell your department heads. And then after that, I would ask that if any of the constitutional officers have any questions, now would be a good time to ask those questions of the board and of the health group that we have here in front of us. And I, again, I, we have the city of Apalachicola here, I don't know if we have a representative from the city of Carabel, I'd like to move to them. And then I'd like, finally, to, with the Solomon and then for other business, there was the East Point Civic Club is here for other businesses, but if they have questions today, I'd like them to ask now. Now is the time to have this discussion, so everybody's on the same page, which would minimize, hopefully, the rumors and the misinformation that's out there. So that's what I would ask the board to entertain, you know, next to the department heads, constitutional officers, two cities, and then the business and civic group organizations, if, if, you know, if that pleases the board, unless you have another order that you want to go into.
Okay. Department head.
So, Whitney, you want to go first? As, you have anything to relay, relates to libraries that you would like to ask? You have to.
Come to the podium, please.
Yeah.
Well, where we are currently is we've stopped all public programming.
You gotta go to the mic so they can, they can pick up, yeah. Good.
We have suspended public programming, at least for two weeks. The big concern for me is I do have staff members, and the majority of our volunteers are over the age of 60, so I am concerned about their exposure risk. In addition to stopping programming, like Michael mentioned, a lot of the surrounding libraries have chosen to close, Jefferson County, Leon County, Apalachicola City Library. So we're also halting interlibrary loans, we won't be borrowing or lending books to any other libraries, so that's another service we've had to suspend.
Y'all doing a deep clean wash, y'all?
Uh, yeah, we're wiping everything down with Clorox wipes, you know, there's always, you know, so much you can do, keep, keep heavy-use surfaces wiped down as much as possible. We are seeing, you know, people are still coming in the county, we still see travelers, so.
So, so there is a point, though, Commissioners, that I might be bringing to you via email or whenever we have our next meeting, that we have to reduce the hours at, at the libraries, because, you know, it's already a very bare-bones staff, and we rely a lot on volunteers. And like she said, because of the age of the volunteers and the staff, if they get sick with something else, you know, they can't make it, you might get that message. So I want the public, and especially the board, to be aware of that situation. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, anything outside of your report that you want to report to the board? As it relates to this, I mean, Parks and Rec, I know is a big deal for you.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I could have waited on my report, but the Dixie Uve League has shut down, I don't know if y'all, y'all heard about it, but the cost of this, this virus going around, so the safety of the kids, so we don't have any sports going on right now. But I do, I would like to ask is, for a solid waste, what's the risk of it? You know, it's very highly contaminated itself already, so do we need to be under any kind of special lookout for anything for landfill?
We can get additional information and guidance from the CDC on that, but I would say that this is a virus that's typically transmitted person to person. So I would say, you know, it can be transmitted by fomites, and those are just surfaces, things that you touch, but most likely, the most common transmission route is from one person to another person, either by hands, or even directly from droplets that can fly from a person's nose, or mouth, or whatnot. So I would encourage you to encourage your staff to practice those good health behaviors that we discussed earlier, and good hygiene habits as a whole. If that means wearing more gloves, as they're picking up things, that, especially if they're around things like tissues, or things like that, I know you have staff that, with the volunteer pro, not volunteer, I'm sorry, with the program that go out and clean the bathrooms and. Career Source, yes. I believe there are a few who are with Parks and Rec. I know I've seen them at the Carabel Beach in the morning, and whatnot, they are around garbage cans and things like that, so I would encourage them to practice the same precautions, if not a little bit more, since they're around more tissues, fomites, things like that. But this is a virus that is transmitted person to person.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, I guess the next would be, are there any constitutional officers that have any questions at this time for the board and/or the group in front of us?
Rick Watson, tax collector. I want to bring you up to date on the directives that we've received from the Department of Motor Vehicles, and the executive order that the governor has issued. Anyone who has a driver's license expiring in the next 30 days has an additional 30 days to renew without any fine or penalty. We are encouraging people to use internet for renewals. I have temporarily suspended driving tests because of the closeness of people during the test, and I've also temporarily suspended issuance of concealed weapons licenses, and I'll do that on a week-to-week basis. We have not received any direction from the Department of Agriculture, they handle the licenses for concealed weapons, but in consultation with other tax collectors, several have suspended issuing those licenses. So, I did have a question for the health professionals. We process a lot of mail. Is there anything that we should do different about processing the mail? Because we're getting on to the time, at the end of this month, all property taxes are due, and then we'll, we'll be doing a delinquent tax sale, but I went to internet last year, so I think that'll be a good thing. But I am concerned about the mail.
From getting the mail out to people?
We receive a lot of mail, tax payments and renewals, the tax entile. More the handling of the mail is what he's asking about.
Oh, you mean from a transmission? Oh, there's really no evidence to show that mail is something that we need to be worrying about. Like she said, it's mostly from a respiratory lens, so if, if that's the concern, that's not really the focus area. I'm sorry, I thought you were trying to come up with tele-strategies for payments, and I was processing that in my head, how that would work.
Also, just, just basic hygiene habits, don't touch your face.
Right.
Just, it's hard, if you have an itch, you want to scratch it, we're humans, just don't touch your face. Wash your hands as much as possible.
We had already set a clean protocols, and I appreciate the notice that we got from Michael yesterday, and I, more cleaning supplies are gonna be coming.
Yes, that's what we're working on right now, to get more cleaning supplies, so, yeah. So, as he asked that question, how long does it live on surfaces? I, I heard about metal, I've heard about wood, I've heard about clothes, how, how long does it actually live?
Okay.
Just to clear that up.
Okay, I do have it in here. This is the guidance that we've received so far from the CDC on surfaces. So, it's a novel strain, right? It's a new strain of coronavirus. So infectious disease scientists believe that the virus could have the potential to survive on certain surfaces for, it could be up to a few days. And so what we're asking is for people to just simply disinfect those commonly touched surfaces, doorknobs, telephones. What are some commonly touched surfaces?
Mice.
Okay.
On a computer.
Oh.
Hey, would you guys?
Those are the type of things that we're focused.
Sorry, Sarah, ask the sheriff to hold off for me one second, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sarah, go ahead. I apologize.
So, so that's what we're talking about when we talk about surfaces, commonly touched surfaces.
Okay.
Okay, does that make more sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Oh, yeah, when you're shaking, if, to avoid shaking hands, they, they recommend the fist bump, I, at this point, do a little elbow move or something, just anything else.
So, people even trying to kick feet in there, okay. All right, Sheriff, if you, if you would, because I know the board has got, they've asked, can you talk us about the jail and what, and I know you've had conferences with other sheriffs about, and I hate to use this word, but this is the word you use, clean jails and dirty jails, how do you?
Well, we're just reducing the population, we're working with Jack Campbell and his staff here, to release anybody who is low-risk, as far as being in the community, who maybe has a low bond, misdemeanor, folks like that. DOC has quit accepting inmates, so we have about four that were on the verge of going, so we're having to hold on to them, but we are reducing our population. We have eliminated our volunteers from coming until after this crisis for the next couple of weeks, which we have a lot of volunteers that come into the jail, probably about 50 over the course of the week, so they're not coming. We're already doing video visitations, we don't have to worry about it impacting folks visiting with their loved ones, they can still do that electronically, so we're doing everything we can. Sarah's been really good, her staff's been over there, they're gonna get us some masks and stuff like that to wear if we need them, so I think we're in good shape right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And from the sheriff, I'll go to the clerk, because then we want to know what the courts are doing, so he kind of opened that door slightly.
Right now, all our jury selections through the end of March have been canceled. I had a conference call yesterday with the chief judge in our circuit, and right now, none of our other regular court has been canceled, you know, for pleas and things like that right now. That's gonna be pretty much up to the discretion of the judges. And we have a circuit judge that comes from Tallahassee, and we also have our county judge. But the Florida statutes require certain things, and there's a lot of things that the clerk in statute says the clerk shall do, so I can't rock, just suspend certain things that we, we do in our office, but we're, we're paying attention to the health department's directives and things we hear. We're sanitizing everything in our office, because we really do deal with a lot of public people with marriage license, passports, fines, I mean, just all the court proceedings. I'm, I'm really just trying to tell my girls to sanitize everything, you know, wash your hands, wipe light switches, doorknobs, your desk, your, your computer things, because we're, you know, we're trying to keep that distance and, and protect the people that come in contact with us. I'm also, I have a staff of like 18, including a couple of part-time, you know, if anybody's sick, I'm encouraging them not to come. We'll figure out something, because we don't want them coming and, you know, and doing anything to hurt the rest of the staff. The clerk does have discretion on people that owe fines and, and traffic tickets and certain things, so I would definitely work with our public, if people have to shut down from work and have problems paying things, we can put them on payment plans and give them continuance, because we're gonna look at individual cases, because we know the people in our county. So we're definitely gonna be looking at that. I, I guess I, I had notified Pam as our emergency management about the closing of the juries, but should I be notifying somebody with y'all, too, or just Pam would do that?
If it gets to, if it gets to Pam, she, she will inform us, and we can try to keep any, any type of update that the public would need to know, we're helping to support the EOC Facebook page, so we can make those announcements and keep all of our residents in the loop on closures that are happening around.
Well, I will definitely keep y'all in, in mind. I do know that our public defender's office and our state attorney's office, as of today, have stopped visitors coming into their offices. So with that being said, I'm looking for those people to show up at my office. So, we're just really paying attention, and we'll stay in touch and do everything we can to remain open, because I feel like if the government remains operating.
Right.
It helps with that panic, and I, I would definitely not ever want to close the court unless we had to.
Yeah.
But I think we're doing everything we can on, on my front to protect my staff and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Commissioners, let's look to an issue that concerns us. What I was looking at, it wasn't a clock, is at the same time you said everybody should be at least six feet apart.
I know, I didn't want to.
And once, then said, I looked on this side of the room, and I was like, oh, I was trying to measure here mentally, and, and the limit of people that, that they're encouraging us not to go over, so when we have meetings. So fortunately, this is one of those months where we have five Fridays, so we won't meet again for three weeks. Now, I will say this, a lot changed over the weekend, so a whole heck of a lot could change over three weeks, so we'll make a determination about county commission meetings as we get there. Planning and zoning is the same thing, like you've heard from your other departments and constitutional officers, we're sanitizing, we're trying our best to deal with the public, but, you know, we have, you guys don't want us to stop issuing permits, you know? People need electrical upgrades, they need power turn, you know, we, we have to deal with the public, we're doing the best that we can. And if someone gets sick, same thing, I encourage them to stay home. My office is smaller, so we are looking at, I mean, there is, next week, if schools are closed, I have parents in my office, so we're trying to incorporate that. They said the schools might be closed longer than that, so I, I don't know, do I rotate one of my staff to be the babysitter and everybody else works? I don't know, I don't know where we're at yet, but we'll cross that bridge as we get there. But that's what we're working on, you know, your staff next door is working on. And as it relates to constitutional officers, department heads, I missed anybody, because the next thing I want to move on is to the cities, and then we'll, oh, yes, she is, she sure is, I just saw her hold, but Ms. Property Appraiser, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Eric, I'll get to you, because I'm, I'm sorry, I saw you and I.
We're just, we're staying educated.
Yes, ma'am.
We're keeping doorknobs sanitized, countertops sanitized, reminding all employees to go on a regular basis, soap your hands for 20 seconds, pretty much just staying informed and educated, and trying to do our best to keep our office safe, as well as the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Eric Lustran, raise your hand for a quick second.
Same thing they're all saying, but we're fortunate in regard that we just moved our office, and a lot of people haven't found us yet, so honestly, that's a blessing in disguise, so. University has, you know, kicked into high gear with this thing, and they're sending down policies hourly to us, it's like ridiculous amount of emails coming through and webinars we have to sit in on. But they're following the same best practices that we're hearing about, just on a pretty large scale. They are sending students home from campus, basically, and they're doing all of their learning courses, they're moving to online only, so big steps, but just to do what they're telling us we need to do. So they have only. So big steps, but just to do what they're telling us we need to do. So they have talked to all of our county offices about no public gatherings and programs for a while. They've given us a date that may be a moving window. Right now, it's the end of April, April 30th. Don't be scheduling, you know, 4H programs. Don't be scheduling groups that have to get together to do extension programming under UF's name. So that's kind of where we are. And I am spraying surfaces and cleaning things in that building, even though we have very few people coming in there. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that said, I'll ask Mayor Kevin Vegas to...
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the health department for all this good information. The main step we've taken has been to close the Margaret Key Library for a couple of weeks. We felt like we have many visitors, a steady stream, that use the public keyboards there, and that could be a place where the transmission is spread. So just out of caution, we've closed the Margaret Key Library. We're having an emergency meeting tonight to discuss other options, but otherwise, city hall is open. You know, we encourage people to call in by phone or use email if they have permit requests or things. And we're going to discuss tonight putting a temporary hold on late fees or disconnect fees for utility bills. But that's all we've got now.
That meeting's at 6:00 PM. Do you want to be there?
It's totally up to you.
Okay, well, I think so.
Thank you. Anyone from the city of Carabelle that I can call on? Ma'am?
Just a quick note. Nita Grove, City of Apalachicola, and also DEP and NOAA, we got word yesterday that the nature center will close and be closed until probably the end of the month, but we'll readdress it. All of our programs were canceled as of Monday, all of our classes on the DEP front. We're waiting on official word, but there has been a lot of rumors. I saw last night on the manager, on the state park manager's Facebook page, that the museums in town will be closed, the Orman House and the Gori. But the state parks that are natural state parks, I think are going to be open during daylight hours. But I'll send that to you, and I'm also going to send it to Deanna so that we, when we get confirmation on that. There's a lot of rumors out there, but so far, that's what I know.
Okay, good. Okay, so I guess, the only other two I was considering is the, do I go to the East Point Civic Club first and then John, or you guys prefer I...
Put that bill in.
He just got up and left. That's why I didn't call him. No, y'all want me to defer to John? Oh, Rex. And I know you guys are on the agenda to formally introduce yourself a little bit later, but, you know...
You know, I'm also a member of the TDC, but I would like to thank the county for the way they're handling it, not canceling. I have employees. We are a tourist destination. I just want to thank y'all for the way that y'all handling it, that you're getting their appropriate information out and trying to maintain as normal a business as possible. And that's really all I'd like to say.
We taking it one day at a time, and it might come to a day we have to, but right now...
Never know. All right, Mr. Solomon.
Morning, commissioners. At this time, I prepared a statement that I sent to Commissioner Jones and Marone. Mr. Jones is also the chairman of the TDC. If it takes this time to opportunity to read that after I put my glasses on. In regards to the COVID-19, we have been following all the updates through the Florida Department of Health, Visit Florida, and the Center for Disease Control in regards to domestic travel recommendations. At this time, the federal government has not recommended limiting domestic travel. Any traveler should practice the usual precautions. We encourage all tourists and industry partners to stay aware of the situation and take necessary precautions. Please refer to the Florida Department of Health business guidelines as well as the guidelines for large events. Franklin County Tourist Development Council has suspended event marketing until further notice and will resume once the events are rescheduled. To our partners and businesses, we encourage you to continue to refer to the Department of Health. The CDC, as well as Visit Florida, has a new website with comprehensive information, and it's called Florida Now, for the most up-to-date information and guidance on COVID-19. One of the things that I want to echo what Mr. Penicup said, the cohesiveness of the county getting together and having one message is awesome. And I appreciate the county commissioners for making that step of all of us have the same message at the same time. One of the things the commissioners addressed earlier in the meeting was the rumors and misinformation that gets out because of social media and other places. One of the rumors was restaurants closing, the other one was beaches closing. We had a lot of phone calls about the county commissioner was going to close the beaches today. And I, of course, I go by what's on the agenda, and I told them that was not on the agenda for this meeting. So I just wanted to let you know that rumor was out there as well.
You know, I was going to mention, I did hear that there is additional guidance coming from the Department of Business and Professional Regulations for restaurants and bars. And as soon as we get that, as soon as we get our hands on that new guidance, we're going to be sending it out. We have Toni Mahaffey from our environmental health team on it. So we'll make sure that that gets out to our businesses that need it.
Good.
I've got a question. We're going to have influx of extra kids coming in because it's spring break. Is that going, how we deal with that?
Visitor messaging, basically. Like we said in this, it's to make sure that they have the information the Department of Health and the CDC is putting out. We currently already have those visitors here.
Yeah.
The spring break started Friday.
Okay. I do have one thing for the board, Tony Shuler, John, and Sarah. So we have two, maybe three, things scheduled for the Armory parties. Is it, I guess, this quick question is, do I force them and say, look, the Armory's not available at least until the end of the month. You guys need to reschedule. How, I mean, I kind of need, because how for Tony Shuler, how responsible is the, and I know you don't like to answer these kind of questions, as I just hit you with them, but how responsible is the county as it relates to using the Armory as a rental facility, you know? I mean, yeah, you have that look that I hate to see you have when I ask a question, but, you know, I'm just trying to figure out a path forward.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we've done at TDC, we canceled all events, any events that we were helping market, anything that's going on across the county. So I think taking steps to the end of the month would not be inconsistent with what we're already doing for special events.
Okay.
Because that's what they would be if there had been the Armory. That's just my thoughts, but before we get, you know, too far into this, I...
Yeah, all events have postponed currently in Franklin County.
Mr. Marone, I had this conversation briefly yesterday. We did not get a chance to complete it, but I guess we're going to do it live now, which is, yes, it should be canceled. I mean, we're just as good as the NBA. They've canceled their seasons. Lots of sporting events have canceled their seasons, and, I mean, we are here to serve the public health. I mean, obviously, refund these people their money, whoever it is. I understood there was one event, now you're saying there are multiple events.
Yeah, I think about two or three. And I speak of wedding events, and I know John and Commissioner Jones are speaking of other things, so, yeah.
Yeah. The one event we talked about yesterday was a large gathering.
Yes, very large.
The other events are also large gatherings. So my recommendation would be cancel it, refund their money with our condolences and sincere regrets, but public health does come first.
It's me. Sorry. All right. That's it. My list is, come to the end of my list for anyone to speak to the board. I mean, any other comments, questions? We, you think we're informed?
I have a statement I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I think what we need to have going forward from today is we do need to have some kind of issued county statement, but it needs to be unified, and I think that's what we've been able to do here this morning. Folks, if you're at risk or you feel sick, just stay away from people, stay at home. This last weekend, I woke up Saturday morning with a sore throat. Be at ease. It was just a sore throat. But I waited all day long, didn't take any medicine, because I didn't want to hide any symptoms in case it was something else. Sunday, yeah, it's just a sore throat. I have nothing else but a sore throat. So I started treating that. Monday morning, I was able to go back to work, and my throat wasn't hurting. It still sounds funny, but that's just me. But anyway, but I took that precaution. I didn't go to work Saturday. I kept my other employees from having to be exposed to me just in case. And that's really all you do. You can't stop life.
Well, goose it in the corner today.
I made the point. I'm always to the side. But I think getting a unified message out and people knowing that everybody's spoken into this process this morning, I think will make a big difference.
I really hope. I really hope it helps. I mean, I hope we've done good here by getting this information out there and, you know, letting particular community leaders and, you know, your constitutional, your department heads speak, you know, raise concerns.
And we want the public to know, give us the information we got today. The margin might change.
Yes, sir.
As we get orders from different sources...
Yeah.
Things will change, though, and that's what we're going by. It's coming from down the line. All the rumors you hear, just drop it down, call, get on the computer and look up what, where the information will be located at on the computer.
And actually, as you say that, I will try my best today to work with our web designer to maybe co-link or just have it forward, have a link on our website that forwards it straight to where it needs to be so you can get the information. That's probably the best thing to do.
Yeah.
They should just be to put a banner, a clickable banner.
Let's click, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we do that, and that'll help some too. We get all the information, try to get it to the public. And that'll, come on, that'll stop some of the phone calls.
I forgot to add, Department of Health has a great website now. They just came out with a dashboard that will, if you click on that dashboard, it will show you all the cases throughout the counties, all the counties. So in case you hear a rumor that we got some cases in our county, it'll show you, you know, just keep you up to date. So for the public, I think you go to floridahealth.gov and then probably find the link, but it's a new dashboard for the Department of Health with COVID-19. I think it's real good.
Yeah. What we're going to do is send that out in our daily update today, just so that everybody knew that the dashboard exists, because it's really neat to look at. It's a map, and you just click on the counties, you can see that ours are not colored, which means that we don't have any cases right now.
Yeah, and I forward that link to y'all. Y'all can forward that to your constituents too, commissioners.
Okay.
Nicole Stevens, for a second. Good morning, commissioners. Nicole Stendval. I just have one comment that I wanted to mention to the community. We have a lot of folks inquiring about wanting N95 masks for their sales. Right now, as we all know, the nation, or worldwide, actually, we're experiencing a shortage in PPE supplies.
What?
I'm sorry. Personal protective equipment supplies, as in goggles, face shields, N95 respiratory protective mask. Right now, it's not recommended for the general community to be walking around with masks over their face. This can cause a lot of unnecessary panic. We are conserving those masks for the healthcare personnel and also for the sick individuals. So I just want you guys to know that we are working with our healthcare partners to ensure that everyone that's in the, out in the personal, the provider offices, as well as the hospital, the EMS, and the sheriff's department, that they're all equipped with the N95 mask. But we do have a very limited supply, but we're doing our best to make sure that the appropriate people have these masks that are needed. Any additional resource requests from the offices, the hospitals, any of these healthcare facilities, the resource requests are going through Pam Brown out through our emergency management department. So...
And just let it be known, you know, we not trying to hide nothing. We not trying to hide nothing. We get our information from the sources. We commissioners. We not medical peers. We not scientists and nothing. And we get our information from the profession of people that we trust. I meant that give us our information. And I'm not hiding nothing, you know? I want to live. I got a family. I want them to live. I want the community. I want everybody. So let's work together, and we'll beat this thing.
Yeah. So Nicole, I guess you turned down my request for the extra-large orange hazmat suit, huh?
[laughing]
I'm not going to get that. All right, cool. All right, commissioners, I think that's it. Oh, sorry.
Before we leave, Mr. Chairman, I do have something I just wanted to mention. So we were having a discussion a couple of weeks ago about everybody in the county that's county employees, I think the cities and the school district. All those people are on CHP insurance.
Yes.
CHP insurance has an app, Amwell, that you can do telemedicine if you feel sick. You don't have to go somewhere. You can do it. Matter of fact, Erin, you just did that, didn't you?
I did. I did. Actually, about a month ago, I started feeling a little sick around lunchtime, and then by the time I got off work that day, when I got home, I had 102-degree fever. It was about a month ago, so of course, I called East Point Medical. You know, they weren't able to see me, didn't even have any appointments the next day. So I called, actually, Amwell. You know, I did the little, there's an app, so the doctor can actually see you as well on your smartphone, and went through my symptoms and then also, you know, my temperature. It was a $15 copay. They actually had a prescription called into CBS by about 5:45 that day, and my husband went and picked up my prescription. And, I mean, it was a really good service. And it's not good, you know, of course, for all different types of sickness. However, on Amwell, you can take care of the most common issues such as colds, flu, fever, rash, abdominal pain, sinusitis, pink eye, ear infection, and migraine. So, you know, if you want to see a medical professional for $15 anytime, that's a good...
Yeah, the BA got that going on too, the same program.
Good. Good, 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 good call.
Okay, well, we're going, yeah. We're going to break for five minutes.
Five minutes.